I don't know that I would, I don't know. Are y'all ready, because we are. I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, October the 3rd, 2016. Want to welcome everyone. I'm going to pronounce this name correct tonight, because I think he's a Dutchman. He's going to give our invocation. Pastor Dyke Verhurt is good enough. Life Church Assembly of God at 4100 Kings Springs Road is going to come forward to give our invocation and also lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Please bow your heads with me. Dear heavenly Father, we're thankful for another beautiful day in which to live and to serve in the city of Smyrna. Thank you for guiding our mayor and our city council as they consider proposals and issues that will impact our city tonight. We ask that you guide them with your wisdom so the city of Smyrna and its citizens can enjoy a greater quality of life. Thank you for providing, presiding over this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Did you say the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Life Church Assembly of God is located at 4100 Kings Springs Road across from Ryan Park. It's a great church. I'm sure they'd love to have you drop in. If you're looking for a church, they're good folks. Agenda changes, we don't have any. We got a couple of Merrill reports tonight. Proclamation, recognition, and respect for firefighters. Is Betty Turley here? I know she's Betty, you want to come up? I might say it wrong. I'm sorry, Doug Norton. Derek Norton. Derek Norton. Is Derek's dad here? Derek's father's here from Iowa, and he watches us live stream in Iowa. He watches all our council meeting, and it just goes to show how lonesome it is in that state. Derek said tonight it's better than watching corn grow, so we're glad to have you here for a live meeting. I want to make sure I pronounce your son's Doug's name incorrectly in live and in person. So Derek, if you'll get the proclamation for the respect for firefighters.
Yes, sir. It's my honor to read this resolution, a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, "Respect for Firefighters." Whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club believe that a firm commitment to the safety of the citizens of Smyrna and Cobb County is a fundamental responsibility. And whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club recognize that, in addition to firefighting duties, fire department personnel provide emergency medical services administering the basic life support to help preserve life until more advanced treatment can be provided and thereby significantly reducing deaths and disabling injuries. And whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club recognize that fire inspection duties performed by fire department personnel are a powerful proactive measure which prevent a great amount of property damage, injury, and death year after year. And whereas the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club annually recognize and honor the members of the Smyrna Fire Department and other public safety professionals who risk their lives to help safeguard the welfare and property of citizens and continue to support programs aimed at raising public awareness of the importance of fire safety. Now therefore, I, AMEX Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2016, as Respect for Firefighters Day and ask all citizens of the Smyrna area to join the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club in expressing thanks to the members of the Smyrna Fire Department for the invaluable service they perform for the community. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this third day of October in the year of our Lord, 2016. AMEX Bacon, Mayor.
Betty, would you like to say something?
Yes, sir. I want to thank the mayor and council for this proclamation, and on behalf of the Smyrna Optimists, I proudly accept this proclamation. I want to invite everybody in our community to join the Smyrna Optimists in appreciation for the fire department of Smyrna. And mayor and council, I want to see y'all at the breakfast on October the 14th, 7:00 a.m. at the American Legion Post.
Derek, you want to present that? Chief Akris here.
While we get ready for the picture, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Smyrna Fire Department to Betty specifically and to the Smyrna Optimists, thank you so much for years of support, and we'll be there hungry for some breakfast on the 14th. And you heard her, I think y'all have to go too.
She tells us every year we better be there.
One day I'm going to see you there, Mayor.
If you'd have them right at 9:00, I might be there.
I think you're going to do a picture.
Thank y'all very much. Hold it in front of Derek's face, you get a better picture. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
I'm surprised you didn't be there. Derek is chairman of that Public Safety Committee here, expected to be there at 7:00. It's really a great breakfast, and the Optimists Club is great to recognize our public safety folks every single year, and it's great. And if I didn't like Betty, I wouldn't cut up with it, but thank you, Betty, for all you do. I mean, but I'll be there. 2016-386 is another proclamation in recognition of Campbell High School Day, October 7th, 2016. I know I saw Dr. Walker right there. I'm going to let the council member Terry Nudelwich read the proclamation. Dr. Walker, if you want to come up and anybody else that you've got, and I see some of your folks with you, and hey, those cheerleaders know me, I think some of them. I saw them at Croy Engineering when they had their opening. And somebody on the drum, I met one of the guys from the drum the other day at church. I bet he's not here. Okay? Y'all spread out. They got to come, got some room over here. Yeah, some of y'all come up and get behind us. Look at that. See, I knew they liked me. I come on. Y'all cheerleaders get ahead and the drums get down there. Don't be afraid. There's plenty of room up here. This is great.
Drum guys, drum come down this way.
Hey, how do you turn off this phone? I won't turn it off. I'll turn it over y'all. It's what I love about this, these kids showing me how to use my phone. Hold on. Power off. I got it. The proclamation, where's it at? I don't know. Who's got the proclamation? Government at its best. I don't know where it's at. I wasn't in charge of the. Do we have a proclamation we can read? Would the band like this to play while we're... Dr. Walker, Dr. Walker, you want to, it'd be spent time, well-spent time to tell somebody about school and how we're doing, or Jennifer Bennett, is she around? Do you want to, well, this, is the proclamation coming? Uh, yeah, let us, this won't take but a second. You got it to read? Read, read the proclamation first, and then we'll know that it will be presented to y'all. Now, Dr. Walker. Believe me, it's like this every meeting.
Needs must. So, here is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna proclaiming Campbell High School Day. Whereas Campbell High School's vision is to seize the present, to soar into the future, and its mission is preparing students to contribute and succeed in a global society. And whereas Campbell High School represents the community of Smyrna in April 2016, being named sixth of the Cobb County high schools and in the top 36% of the most challenging high schools in the United States by the Washington Post. By celebrating Ms. Flores Ortega for being named the 2016 Teacher of the Year by the Foreign Language Association of Georgia. Bestowing upon 69 students the Georgia International Skills Diploma Seal, signaling global competency, this is more than any other Cobb school. Celebrating cross-country coach Rebecca Harges being named Cobb County Cross Country Female Coach of the Year by the Marietta Daily Journal. Establishing an innovative freshman jumpstart program, setting it apart from other schools in the area as recognized by the Marietta Daily Journal. Instituting a new tradition of, quote, "National College Signing Day," where all seniors advancing to college are celebrated. Having the only senior named in 2016 as the Goisetta Scholarship recipient. Offering vibrant career, technical, and agricultural education programs. Collaborating closely with Chattahoochee Technical College, allowing students to enroll and work concurrently on a high school diploma and a college degree. Sending students to the Georgia Governors Honors Program, the American Legion Boys State and its Auxiliary Girls State Government Leadership Programs. Hosting the Cobb County School District Magnet International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, outperforming other programs in Georgia, the United States, and globally. Celebrating all of its athletic teams and over 50 academic, artistic, and socially responsible clubs or activities, many achieving great accomplishments in 2015 and 2016, setting records and winning awards as groups, teams, or individuals. Now therefore, I, AMEX Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Smyrna and Georgia, do hereby applaud the commitment and spirit of the Smyrna community and the administration, faculty, students, and parents of Campbell High School and proudly proclaim the 7th day of October, 2016, as Campbell High School Day. I encourage all citizens to support this school, its administration and faculty, the students, and the parents and volunteers who are seizing the present in pursuit of a bright future. Happy homecoming, y'all.
On behalf of the students and staff at Campbell High School, I'd just like to express my appreciation for the mayor and the city council for your continued support. Since I arrived at Campbell in June of 2015, I have been overwhelmed with the amount of support we get from the city council, the mayor, and the community. That is actually an abbreviated list of the many accomplishments that we had last year. It was a stellar year, and we're continuing on that track this year. Just this past week, we were recognized for having the highest gains in SAT and ACT scores for the Cobb County School District. So it just is a great reflection on the good things that are happening, the hard work of our students and our teachers, and the upward trajectory of the high school in general. So thank you again for your support, and thank you for this hard-working group of students who was able to come out tonight and celebrate this big event. We encourage you to come out on Friday for our homecoming parade that will start right here in the First Baptist Church at 5:00. And our homecoming game is at 7:30 on Friday evening. We'd love to have a great community turnout. We also have a bonfire on Thursday night, I believe, starting at 8:00. So there's a lot of fun things going on for homecoming. Please come out and support these students in the school.
Yes, so folks will now, not that it makes any difference, this is, I graduated in '66, so this is our 50th class reunion coming up, October 22nd. We didn't have anything like this, the cheerleaders are all different, and the band is unbelievable, and it just shows how much we've grown and our community's changed. Thank y'all so much for y'all going to Campbell High School, and Dr. Walker and your staff. I don't know if there's any staff that you want to recognize. I know that, I mean, you can, you can come back to the mic. You can, you can repeat the mic and...
I would like to recognize our band director, Mr. DeWiner, Jeremy DeWiner. Our cheer coach, Ms. Hermanson is in the back, and Dr. Rudy DeVoe is one of our assistant principals that came out tonight. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank y'all so much, and we're going to, I guess, you can slide there. Jennifer Bennett, you want to come up? We partnered with the Campbell High School Foundation for a number of years with our John Quill City Jog, where they help us, and we have, we donate some money to them every year. It is a joint partnership, it's after we cover our council. So Jennifer, you want to make that, clean out what I just got through?
Well, tonight, we thank the sponsors and the members of the community and all the volunteers from Campbell High School that come together with the city and help us put on the John Quill City Jog. It raises $10,000 annually for the Campbell High School Educational Foundation. So we have a couple of things to do tonight. I'm going to thank the sponsors. We're going to have the Educational Foundation tell us a little bit about themselves and what's going on there, and we have the check presentation. So our sponsors for the jog, gold sponsors are Advanced Disposal, IBM SECU Credit Union, Primrose School of Smyrna West, Glenda Baker &amp; Associates Realtors, Gas South, Orange Theory Fitness. Silver sponsor is Kenny's Great Pies, and Kenny's Great Pies, they give us whole pies to give out as awards for our first-place winners in all of our categories, all of our age groups for the race, and it makes our race really special. The bronze sponsors are Charter Bank, West Stride, Truly Nolan Pest Control, and Chick-fil-A. And now, I'm going to bring up Kathy Riggins with the Campbell High School Educational Foundation to walk us through a little bit more.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor and council members, I'm Kathy Riggins, and I'm the current president of the foundation, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Campbell Foundation. The Campbell High School Educational Foundation is a nonprofit, tax-deductible organization that was formed in 1995 by concerned parents who saw a need to bring the school and community together for the benefits of all of our students. The foundation is comprised of dedicated community members, former parents, former students, and current staff at Campbell. The purpose of the foundation is to provide supplemental funds to enhance the educational programs and student academic experiences at Campbell. A major initiative is funding the Career Placement Resource Center. Every year, we budget $10,000 to hire personnel to manage the career center. For the past couple of years, we've been very fortunate to have Susan Sinclair fill this position. Students who visit the career center receive help with things like college applications, scholarship searches, building resumes, registering for the ACT, PSAT, SAT, MOWR, compass testing, just to name a few of the things. Susan also helps to schedule college recruiter visits to Campbell and helps to plan and execute college and career affairs twice a year. During the 2015-16 school year, there were 1,086 individual student appointments, 2,951 students that were in group sessions, for a total of 4,037 students that were serviced by the career center. Campbell was recognized for having the highest gains on both the ACT and SAT in Cobb County, and we would like to think that because of our commitment to the career center that we have helped to achieve this success. Also, for the 2015-16 school year, the foundation, along with the donation from the PTSA, purchased 30 iPad Airs, the cases for each iPad, the management system software that the county requires, and an iPad charging cart for the, to house the iPads. The total cost was over $16,000 for this purchase, and the foundation donated $11,000 toward it. A partnership with the Smyrna Foundation has also allowed us to purchase an ad in The Bright Side for the past couple of years where we can highlight the many successes going on at Campbell. There's still a lot of people in the community that don't realize what a great school Campbell High School is. This year, we will be donating $500 to the JROTC program at Campbell in appreciation for their continued help in helping us to work the John Quill Jog. Without them, we just couldn't do it. They're a big help on the Jog Day. And we'll, we will continue funding the career center and other projects as our resources allow. As you can see, we try to be very good stewards of the money that we receive, and we try to focus on things that will benefit the most students at Campbell. We appreciate the support of the mayor and city council and the citizens of Smyrna. Without your continued support, the foundation would not be able to assist with the career center, which has been very beneficial to the success of Campbell's students. Another fundraiser that we have every year is our golf tournament, and that is scheduled for April the 17th at Fox Creek, and we would like to see you all come out and vote golf with us that day.
I'm going to, you want to introduce the folks that some of the...
We have some, some foundation board members, y'all come on up.
And while they're bringing, I picked them Derek Norton tonight. I'm going to ask Derek to present this check on behalf of the city, so that your dad will forgive me for those things that I said. Introduce who you have up there. I know, I know Ma, but it's just like you'd be good to...
Okay. This is Ann Kirk, y'all all know her. Jim Harris, and he's new on the board. This is his first year, so we're going to work him hard.
His wife's a judge or something, isn't she?
Right, right. Jim Dolmer, he's been on the board for a couple of years, and of course, Dr. Walker. The principal is always on the board of the foundation.
Yeah, and this, this council supports, it's just not the mayor's, the whole entire council that supports what y'all do, and it helps our community tremendously. We only have one public, Cobb County Public High School in Smyrna, unless they've snuck one in here that I didn't know about. But this, we do our part, and we thank y'all so much for, for what y'all do for the school, because it is a great high school, and it's getting better every, every year, and everybody's, it's a great community. So Derek, if you'll present that check, and that is a real check. Yeah, get a picture and... We usually give them a big check that's no good, it's a plastic, big plastic one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks to the band and the cheerleaders and the...
And Mayor, I'd also like to thank Jennifer for all her hard work in securing all these sponsors for the jog, because that's a big part of it, of how we get our funds.
You know what it's all about? It's all about getting that Kenny's Key Lime Pie.
Yeah, it is.
And I'm telling you, that's what people want. If they win, they want that Kenny's Key Lime Pie, and he's been a big supporter of the schools and our community for a number of years. So thank y'all very much, and y'all don't have to sit through the rest of this if you don't want to, so, thank y'all. Oh, the check was for $10,000. I thought I said that. Well, you, because you're talking to Dennis. I did say $10,000. Department head reports tonight, we do not have any. Is that correct, Mr. Jones?
That's correct.
Land issues, owners annexation, we have nothing on that. Privilege license, nothing. Seven is formal business. A is 2016-399. Approval of an amendment to the fiscal 2016 budget for 2016 SPOST. Before I go any further, we have an election coming up sometime, I think in November. Are there any candidates here?
No.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jones, the background on 7A formal business, please.
Mayor, when the city council adopted the fiscal year 2016 budget, that was done in July of 2015, and at the time it was adopted, it did not include a specific budget for the 2016 SPOST, which had not started yet. So we, we need for the council to take a look at the amending this budget and including a SPOST budget as part of, I know it's a little backwards, including a budget as part of the 2016 budget, which will include our 2016 SPOST budget. I, I, it's, it's a little convoluted, but basically, there's no way you could have budgeted for it, because you didn't know what it was going to be. Now you know what it is, and it's got to go back in, so when the audit occurs next week, it'll be there. Our finance director, Kristen Robinson's here, if you have any specific questions.
Mr. Ron Fennell, who chairs the Finance Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, our team has done a great job in partnership with our, the folks who are actually going to help us to build this infrastructure out, Croy Engineering, and we appreciate that. But this document is a retro document that is included in our budget plan that outlines the expenditures. As he said, it reflects accurately the numbers that we now have in place, so we know what SPOST expenditures. This is a part of the overall SPOST document that includes a six-year plan, and this is year one, and I move approval.
Motion is second to approve this amendment to our budget. Any discussion? Although some favor in motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item 7B, 2016-384, authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Hyrum, Georgia and the city, and city of Smyrna, Georgia for the purpose of data entry into the Georgia Criminal Justice Information System, CJIS, and have the mayor sign and execute all documents. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, the city of Hyrum has approached the city of Smyrna about operating their criminal justice information system. It's housed internally at the city of Hyrum at the moment, and the proposal that's contained in the intergovernmental agreements that accompanies this, this agenda item delineates the performance of the functions as well as the consideration for the life of the agreement. It will be a sum of $30,000 a year for the first two years, and then $50,000 per year thereafter if the council chooses to move forward with this. It has been recommended by the chief of police and has been reviewed by most municipalities' legal department and found to be legal to form.
Mr. Doug, Derek Norton. Now I got to do something nice, Derek Norton.
As Mr. Jones said, this will bring in $30,000 a year for the next two years and $50,000 after. This is similar to an agreement that we have with the city of Powder Springs, and it's a, a good deal for Smyrna and for Hyrum. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7B, 2016-384, authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Hyrum, Georgia and the city of Smyrna, Georgia for the... City of Smyrna, Georgia, for the purpose of data entry into the Georgia Criminal Justice System, Information System, CJIS, and have the mayor sign and execute all documents.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item C, 2016-387, approval to purchase one equipped Ford Explorer for the deputy police chief. Total cost is $30,332.04. It should be expended from the state asset forfeiture account. Mr. Jones, the background.
Mayor, currently, we have a lieutenant that's being reassigned to the Police Administrative Division. That will occur next week, and he is in a marked vehicle that is needed by the Patrol Division fleet. As you mentioned when you read the agenda, these funds are coming from the state asset forfeiture fund. These are not part of our budget, and it, the total cost of $30,332.04, being recommended by our chief of police.
Mr. Derrick Norton, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, please.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7C, 2016-387, approval to purchase one equipped Ford Explorer for the deputy police chief. Total cost of $30,332.04 to be expended from the state asset forfeiture account.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item D, 2016-391, approval to purchase six equipped Ford Explorers as part of the FY17 Vehicle Replacement Fund at a total cost of $239,021.84. Mr. Jones, the background.
Yes, sir. Mayor, unlike the last purchase, this one was a budgeted as part of our Vehicle Replacement Fund. We will take six vehicles that are at the end of their life out of service and add these six back in. Happy to report that the local award will go to Wade Ford. One item to bring to note, we budgeted $231,000 in FY17 for this action, and the vehicles came in slightly above that, so it's actually $8,021.84 over our budgeted estimate.
Mr. Derrick Norton.
As Mr. Jones said, these are budgeted line items already approved for our fleet. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7D, 2016-391, approval to purchase six equipped Ford Explorers as part of the FY17 Vehicle Replacement Fund at a total cost of $239,021.84.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item E, 2016-406, approval appointment Ward Five representative to keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This term expires December 2016. Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Scott, I'd like to ask you if this would, how would be the appropriate way? Would it be to table it or to postpone the vote until the person that I've spoken with agrees, as she's read over the requirements and the commitment forms? Would it be to table it or postpone?
Yeah, you can just move to table it to the next meeting or a couple of meetings from now, however you want to do that.
And then, next meeting?
Next meeting will be the 17th of October.
At this time, I would like to move to postpone or table item 7E, 2016-406, approval of appointment of Ward Five representative to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This term is to expire December 2016.
And this is, motion to be table till the 16th of 17th?
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry, October 17th. Thank you.
Your second on that? Andrea? Okay. Motion is second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item 2016-407 is approval appointment of Ward Seven representative to keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This term expires December 2017. Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have found a qualified applicant. We don't have the paperwork processed yet, but I anticipate being able to present it. So I move to table this item till 10/17 and approve it then.
Motion is second to table. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. To the 17th of October.
Yes, sir.
Approve seven zero. Eight is commercial building permits. We do not have any. Number nine is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, sir. There are five items on the consent agenda for your consideration tonight. Item A is approval to the September 15th Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B is approval of the September 19th Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C is approval of the September 19th Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item D is an approval to use council chambers on Tuesday, October 18th, from 6:30 to 8:30 for a homeowner association meeting for country park condominiums. And the last item is item E, it's approval of the 2017th Employee Insurance Providers and Plans. This will be through Blue Cross Brew Shield, and it will authorize the mayor to execute the related documents.
Here, motion, we approve the consent agenda. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve six to one. Ms. Wilkinson votes in the negative. Okay. Citizens, I'm sorry. Committee reports will start tonight with Mr. Derrick Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that this week is Public Safety Appreciation Week. I hope that you'll take a moment, as you go about your week, to thank our first responders when you see them. We are truly lucky to have the folks that work for the City of Smyrna, the fire and police, and all of our first responders, and hope that you'll, hope that you'll take that moment and say thank you to them. I've got a few things to report on. We have a meeting, Ward One, Two, and Three joint meeting this Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Community Center. Please come out to hear the updates on Spring Road and other developments. I have a few other meetings to announce. Monday, the 10th, at 7:00 PM at Vining's Point Clubhouse, I'll be holding a Ward One meeting. Wednesday, October 12th, at 6:30, Spring Hill, Ward One meeting at 2625 Carolyn Drive. That's at 6:30 PM. Let's see, Tuesday, October 11th, 7:00 PM at 1,000 Afton Way, Ward One meeting. Falling Waters, Wednesday, October 19th, 7:00 PM at Fire Station Number Three. And Thursday, October 20th, 7:00 PM, Argyle Estates, Ward One meeting at the home of Mike and Kelly Becker. Just wanted to make you all aware of that. The one for Spring Hill was supposed to be this Thursday, and that's been changed to the 12th. And as the mayor said, as he began the meeting, my father is in town. I think he expands our fan base. He's the one, he's the one who watches all of these meetings from Toddville, Iowa. I'm pleased to have him here for the last few days. Been great to see him, and thank you for being here tonight, Ed.
Pretty exciting, isn't it?
With that, I yield.
We're glad you're here. Thank you, Derrick. Ms. Bluestein.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind Ward Two residents that we are having a meeting Wednesday night, a ward meeting, wards One, Two, and Three, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Community Center. Hopefully, you'll be able to get some of your questions answered. I know you may not be pleased with all the answers, but we're doing our best. Thank you so much. With that, I yield. Your honor.
Karen Nolowicz.
Thank you. Yes, it has been busy in the downtown. We had the Wolfstock event on Saturday afternoon, and that was a new event for the city. It was actually put on by Star 94, but it was a great event, and I hope that we'll be able to have that come back in future years. I was also able to attend the Cobb Public Safety Appreciation Breakfast this morning. It's an annual event, and this year, our own police chief, David Lee, led the, he was the master of ceremonies, and he led the program this morning. And actually, recently retired Smyrna detective KK Rozier received two awards, so it was wonderful to see that and see her be recognized for everything she did, particularly with the Crimes Against Children unit here in Smyrna. And I also wanted to say, if you do live in the downtown Ward Three area, you probably noticed that there is a road closure. King Street is closed between Bank Street and the traffic circle that is in front of the library, and hopefully, that'll be opened up within the next day or so, but they're doing some work there. Speaking of road closures, the Campbell High School Homecoming Parade is on Friday. I think that they said earlier tonight, I think it starts around 6:00 PM, and that is gonna go down Powder Springs Street, and it is a lot of fun. If you like to feel like you really want, if you really want that small-town feeling, I highly recommend coming down and standing along Powder Springs Street for the Homecoming Parade as they go from the downtown to Campbell High School. They have floats, they have pageant queens, they have, well, they have their homecoming court, they have the marching band, they have the cheerleaders, they throw candy to kids. It is a lot of fun, and I highly recommend experiencing it. We are gonna have a tri-ward meeting on Wednesday. I hope to see everyone there. Additionally, I sent out the Ward Three newsletter this afternoon, and so if you are on my mailing list, you received that. If not, I will put a link to it up on the Ward Three Facebook page, which is easily Google-able. And if you just go into Facebook, you put in Ward Three Terry, and it will come up. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Corky Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna settle a little bit of Ward Six thunder and announce the Taylor Bronner Park with Art coming up, beginning this Friday evening. The opening reception's Friday, October the 7th, from 6:00 to 9:00 in the Taylor Bronner House, and just encourage everybody to come out. This is a great event, lots of great art that's for sale. So y'all come out. The hours are Friday, October the 7th, 6:00 to 9:00, and October the 8th through the 16th, from 12:00 to 5:00, with a couple of days, late hours, on the 11th and the 13th until 8:00. So please come out and support Taylor Bronner Park with the art. Thank you.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
So I was gonna mention the Taylor Bronner Park with Art as well, but just want to encourage everybody to come. Like Corky said, the reception is on Friday, and then it will run from October the 8th through the 16th, daily, from 12:00 to 5:00, and then two late nights on October the 11th and October the 13th, till 8:00. Thank you.
Councilman Stoner, you wanna mention the Art in the Park, since it's in your district?
I just want to welcome everybody coming to Ward Six with Art in the Park, as I do every week previously for the Food Truck Tuesdays. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I want to report as the chairman of the Community Development Committee, which also covers transportation. I want to thank my fellow council members and the mayor and staff that was able to attend this past week. We were very fortunate, we had the Georgia Department of Transportation Commissioner, Russell McMurray, also the Director of Planning, Jay Roberts, along with our DOT board member, Jeff Lewis, and the Chief Engineer, Meg Perkel. And the reason I mention all those names and positions is the, it's very rare to get a chance to have all four of the top folks at GDOT come out and spend four hours with us here in the City of Smyrna, or really, any community in the state, to get all four of those people's schedules together. And we're very fortunate to have them out here. They did a complete tour of Smyrna, looked at all the progress that we've been doing over the last 25 years here in the community. They were very impressed and very excited about future things that we're doing, and made it very clear to us and those attendants that they look forward to working with our city as we improve other transportation projects around Smyrna as we move forward. So it's always great to have GDOT saying, hey, how can we help you? And that usually means some additional money, hopefully. So all that to be said, again, I just want to thank all the members who were, council members were able to come, including the mayor and the staff, and it was a great, great meeting, and I look forward to working with GDOT. That's all I have to report of it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was also my privilege to join the mayor pro tem this morning at the breakfast to witness our public safety officials in Cobb County. We have a lot of heroes amongst us, and it was nice to celebrate as a community those heroes and to recognize one of our own, and KK Rozier, she did a great job while on staff. She's still hanging around, and she still keeps these guys down the street on their toes. But Chief Lee did an exemplary job, and he brought our chaplain there to return thanks for the breakfast. So it was outstanding representation from the City of Smyrna, and I was proud of that. If you have nothing better to do and you want to go to the Rotary Club tomorrow at noon, I'm their guest speaker. I guess the bottom of the barrel has finally been achieved, so I don't know what I'm gonna talk about yet, but come on by and find out. I have my town hall meeting tomorrow night regarding an application for the Camp Highland development that's proposed by Prime Development Company. We'll be at Bronner Hall, 3180 Atlanta Road at 7:00 PM. This is a project that will impact my ward, but also Ward Six, so I've invited Councilman Stoner, and he's been kind enough to agree. We met once earlier in the year, and this meeting will be an opportunity for the developer, their attorney, the city staff, to be able to answer questions relative to the application's specifics and any details regarding it. The public is invited to attend. We've sent notices out to the neighboring communities. I wanted to be sure that everybody was aware what was in the proposal that's gonna be ostensibly on our calendar on, I think it's October 17th. Thursday is this morning Business Association Luncheon at 11:30 for lunch down the street. If you're not busy, I'd love to have you come by. And then for council members, Cobb Municipal Association meeting is next Tuesday evening, 7:00 PM in Powder Springs. Details in the memo that you will receive tomorrow. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Mike Jones. Scott Cochran. Terry Graham. We do not have a show cause hearing tonight. We got citizens input, got a couple of folks signed up tonight. Alec Bakery, 3459 Shawnee Trail comments.
After watching Channel 2 the other night, other, actually, morning, on this second story on the Reed House, I decided to go ahead with some information I've had that maybe some of the council was unaware of. I took the last calendar year and took 15 days off for the holidays, so I based it on 350 days of the year. There were 1,117 bookings for the Community Center, for 13 rooms available. For that, that calendar year, 40% usage at the Community Center, 40%. Let's take Taylor Bronner. There's four rooms available. 445 bookings for the calendar year is 31%. So when you bought the Reed House that are gonna also compete with events, when you have the demand that low with the other two that are established, I don't see it. When you have 1.8 million and 1.2 to renovate, that's $3 million. That's at 5% in the bank, that's $150,000 guaranteed. When I asked where we got, you know, heard about this on Channel 2 the first time, I had no clue, and many, many other people didn't even know about this, to say the city said we had many chances to come to the whole meeting, or even in citizens input. If you don't know anything about it, you can't ask questions. There was never anything on a flyer in the utility bill, not on the fluorescent signs, and unless you attended a meeting where you discussed it in a regular council meeting, no one knew about this, and this was going on since last January. I find, again, to know and ask a question, was there any marketing analysis done on this? The answer was no. A strategic survey was done. We all know where the house is. Bronner and the Community Center are also on Atlanta Road. But to see that not one of these two other facilities that'll be keep, be competing with it are not even 50%, the demand isn't there. I feel the $3 million will never be returned. And when I asked, what is the estimated revenue from this? The answer from the city was, we have no clue what the income's gonna be, which tells me you're speculating on $3 million. Again, I've said, government should not be in the private enterprise. I don't know why, in the past with other places, we've lost millions on it, and I don't see where we're gonna get a return on the Reed House. And I want to stress, there's no history to the Reed House. It's only 100 years old. And if anyone would like to go to Boston with me, I'll be glad to show you 2,000 homes over... glad to show you two thousand homes over a hundred years old. They don't consider themselves historic, so it is not historic, just that it's a hundred years old, big deal. But I'm concerned about how you're gonna find room for three rooms in the Reed House when the other two aren't even fifty percent full for a year. Thank you.
Cynthia Lawrence, thirteen fifty, Overlook Co., Southeast Smyrna Comments. This is Earl Toppie.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, council. Just wanna bring to public's attention, you all are probably already aware of it, but we've got four amendments on the state ballot, and it behooves our citizenry to check those out. It's really, really important. I think very many people don't even know that those four amendments are going to be on there, so I would encourage all citizenry, including our city council, to check out those Secretary of State's My Voter Page, because that information for the ballot is there. And since that's coming up in five weeks, it's really, really important that we get our voices heard. Thank you again for serving.
Anything, that's the final speaker tonight for citizens' comment. Is there any other thing to be brought before this body? If not, I believe this meeting adjourned at, what time's your clock say? Corky, would do your, no, not your clock, your, your phone.
Seven fifty-two.
Seven fifty-two.